Call order, the November 16th. Stand by for your station. My call and roll please.
Bill White.
Here.
Julie Beckman.
Here.
Jeff Boyle.
Here.
Mike Deppport.
Here.
Keith Mattoon.
Here.
Terry Cameron.
Here.
Turn the flag, we'll stand in three seconds for the three minutes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item. You're in high school this evening?
That's correct.
Well, it's my pleasure to, originally we were going to introduce two students. One of our student had a last minute conflict, so I'm happy to introduce Grace Morgan. Grace is going to talk about a new organization at North High School called I Will, which is the Independent Women.
In Leadership.
In Leadership. And she's going to talk about the purpose of the group, some of the things they've done, and some other plans for the future. We also have a couple of our faculty sponsors with us here, Lynn Longmire and Lois Graham. I'm going to turn it over to Grace, okay?
Hi, I'm Grace. Like Mr. Kasich said, we started this group this year, and it's to combat negative images that women have in society and through the media. And so there's a group of about forty girls at North who get together and we meet every other Thursday. And we kind of talk about these issues and talk about how we can make, we can be better role models as women in society. And so recently, we just did, in October, we did a Run For Her Life event, and it was a five K actually held at North. And all the proceeds went to the family shelter, and we also like raised money and food for them too, as well. And then other plans that we are doing this year are, we're actually planning on screening the Misrepresentation movie again, and hold actually kind of like a clinic for the eighth grade girls to come to North and maybe talk to other role models and discuss the movie after preview, like watching it. And then we're also planning on getting many different speakers to come to North, like women, speakers for Women's History Month in March, I believe, to come and talk to us and kind of just like help us with our group and everything. So, is there any questions?
I wanted to just say, Misrepresentation is a powerful film. If you've seen it already, or I think, I would urge everybody to go see it because it really makes you think.
Yeah, it really did, and it kind of helped us start this group. It kind of helped snowball this group and everything.
We having a good reaction from other?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, our group kind of started like as a small group, and there's been more and more girls getting involved each week, so it's been really helpful.
Anyone else?
I was actually going to ask about Misrepresentation. I haven't seen it or heard about it.
Um, yeah, like it's a very powerful film, and there, it's, I don't, we've been, we showed it last year at our school, and it's kind of, it kind of shows like how women are perceived in society and how some of the images that women kind of see of other women can be very negative and misleading, and it kind of helped us like form this group, so.
So how did you just get together with a few friends and decide to form this group, or how did that work?
Um, well, my English teacher, I had sophomore year and I have her again senior this year, and she kind of started it and then asked me and a couple, like a handful of other students to kind of get together. Last year, we kind of talked about it at the end of school, and then just by talking to other girls and other students, we kind of formed this group.
At the risk of monopolizing the floor, I would just commend you and say, you go, girl!
You might ask, have you considered reaching out to the H G N A, real peer in town? And how can girls?
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would be definitely a great idea. We actually haven't thought of that, but that's a really good idea.
You mentioned bringing eighth graders.
Yeah, yeah, we're thinking of having a clinic for the eighth graders and showing them like misrepresentation and kind of having a clinic with them, just so that as they enter high school, they're a little more comfortable and can, they have some role models to look up to.
Right.
Yeah.
Wish you well.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. The next item, we turn now to the board workshop, item four, first four A is the School Day Committee presentation.
Yes, Mr. White, in the contract, the Board of Education negotiated with the Downers Grove Education Association last spring, one of the provisions in the contract was to create a joint committee of teachers and administrators to look at our school day. And in part in that committee, there were specific dates along the calendar year when the committee was either, was going to come back and either make a recommendation about what sort of schedule to move to, or indicate to the board that it was not ready to make a recommendation, and frankly, the latter is a presentation tonight. However, the committee has met quite frequently since the beginning of the school year, almost weekly, and it has done some commendable work. So tonight, we're going to have a presentation by Dr. Lisa Smith, Assistant Superintendent, and Ms. Karen Edder, Department Chair for Science at South High School, represents DGEA. And this presentation will also be replicated at each of the schools later this week. So, Dr. Smith, Ms. Edder, your opportunity.
All right, thank you. I would assume this mic is okay for everyone. As Dr. McDonald mentioned, the committee was formed with some very tight timelines as we talked during negotiations about the importance of looking at our school day and the teacher work day and the student work day. How do we maximize time for the students? How do we give the students more access to their teachers? How do we give teachers more access to one another and to their students in particular to offer that level of support? Part of the reason that we're here tonight is as part of our commitment during negotiations to commit to looking seriously at a teacher and student work day was to hold ourselves to some pretty tight timelines to make sure that the work of the committee was started and that we progressed to take a serious look at the teacher-student work day. The first timeline that we were required to meet was to have our first meeting by July 18th, which we did do. And as Dr. McDonald shared, we've met almost weekly since then, sometimes for a couple of hours into the evening, and then a couple half-days here and there. The first deadline that we needed to meet was a November 1st deadline, and so this is our first board meeting. And our role here tonight is to make a recommendation to the board, and when we talk about board, DGEA board, Board of Education. And so Karen and I are going to offer an overview of the work that's been done by the committee to date, and then we will end our brief presentation today with what the committee is recommending at this time and then moving forward. So, you know, the, the new workday schedule, the contract language had noted, we committed to taking this time to consider the development and implementation of a new workday schedule for the 2013-14 school term. So when we began our work this year, that was our initial goal. It was also important, as we defined who the committee would be, that we had representation from the DGEA that represented a wide area of content areas. So if you take a look at the committee members, we have department chairs and we have a wide array of departments represented administratively as well. We have building representation and central office representation. So that as the committee began to work, we had different perspectives, because while it sounds easy to take a look at a workday, a student day, we all know, and the committee knows probably more than anyone right now, how complex it really is to, to look at a workday, to look at a student school day, and then to understand all the nuances that go into potentially changing a student or teacher workday. So before I go on, we have some committee members with us today, and I'd ask them to just briefly stand. Dr. McDonald, Steve Bild, Lois Graham, Scott Kasich, Carrie, I'm terrible with pronouncing your last name, Carrie Epking, and Ken Sorensen. So we appreciate them joining us this evening as well. And as Dr. McDonald mentioned, we're going to be doing some additional workshops for teachers later in the week as well. As we talked about, the idea of looking at a teacher and student workday during negotiations, we spent a great deal of time trying to defining what our principles would be. As we're looking at teacher and student workdays, what exactly was our purpose, and what were we going to look at as a goal of this new teacher-student workday? So we decided that as we looked at different schedules and models, that we were interested, and this was one of the core pieces, in a block of time during the day when students, all students, would have equal access to any of their teachers when they needed help. So if you can envision a time during the day when students are not necessarily going to any assigned classroom, but there's a period during the day, and we'll offer a little bit more detail, where if I need to see my math teacher, I can go work with not any math teacher in a lab, but I can go see my math teacher. Also, a period in the day that if I wanted to meet with a colleague for co-teaching to talk about some RTI strategies, other interventions, professional conversations that we might have related to a PLC assessment, whatever else might be going on in our departments or across departments, that it would allow for that common time. So a period of time when we step out of our regular period schedule to meet the needs of students and to meet the needs of teachers. I know, I went through a couple of these. So we talked about, again, that the time being both for student support and for teacher support. It was also important that as we look at schedule, that we maintain or enhance existing programs. It's not the goal of the committee for students or teachers to lose any access to programs that they currently have. Ideally, we'd like to find a model that will potentially reduce the frequency of some of our shortened periods and modified schedules during the day, again, to reduce the loss of class time. And then supervision throughout the school day for all students. If you, again, envision this period during the day, we have 3,000 students at South and over 2,000, 2,400 students at North, and we need to envision what that will look like for different students and what, and how we will serve different types of needs within the student body. And then finally, a schedule that will also honor what we're required by law to offer the students as far as student-teacher contact time.
Okay, so Lisa already touched on a number of these items, but a majority of our committee work was spent developing what we are now referring to as our student resource period. So this is this common block of time that would be provided within the school day when, again, teachers are available and students can get help from their particular teacher. Occasionally, some of the teachers might not be available for students because they would have teacher collaboration time, but other teachers would be. So we had to look into a little bit of a rotating schedule, so students would always have access to some sort of teacher resources. We thought that this common block of time provides both what we're looking for for student resources and for teacher resources. So in our committee work, we investigated a number of different school day models, school schedules from districts in the area and districts across the nation. And what we found is that many districts have time built into their day where students are able to access resources, but perhaps not all at a common time. Some schools offered resource periods just for freshmen or just for seniors, and they were offered at different blocks of time because they were meeting as instructional teams. Some schools offer different schedules during different points in time in the week or in the month to support the teacher collaboration. But we really are, have been unable up to this point to find any models that address both that teacher time and that teacher time within, or student time and teacher time, excuse me, within the school day. So what we're working on here is really what we would call pretty innovative, because it's going to be a model that's directly linked to what the needs of District 99 are. And to serve those needs, it is something that we need to develop that doesn't exist currently. So because of that, we started to investigate the particular logistical items that we needed to address as a committee, and that led us to kind of subdividing our group into smaller committees to start to ask and answer some important questions before we could start to develop what this SRP looks like in District 99. Specifically, supervision, as Lisa had already mentioned, is mentioned in one of our guiding principles. We have to consider what we do with a few thousand students in both of these buildings during this block of time. How do we make sure that they're accounted for? How do we make sure that they're receiving academic assistance? How are we maximizing this time for intervention and for enrichment? How are we maximizing our space when it comes to supervision? How are we making sure that we're utilizing our space to the needs of the students? In terms of technology, we think that some of our systems in place could benefit us in terms of supervision and maximizing our resources with students, but how does the technology we have better serve the needs that we might have if we have students floating around the school, receiving help at, or access from different parties around the building? So those kinds of things had to be investigated. In terms of teacher schedules, if teachers are not available to students every day, on those occasions when they would be using that time as collaborative time, what would they be doing? And how would we rotate teachers in and out of the student access opportunities and the teacher access opportunities so that students had enough access to academic assistance and teachers had enough access to that collaborative time? So how do we get that rotating schedule so we have enough staff available to work with students and meet their needs? And how do we have enough staff available to make that collaborative time work as While we had those conversations, we discussed what the responsibilities of all those parties would be during that time, and then certainly are the financial implications of changing the school day and what we offer for students within the school day is something that's important. And we're going to talk a little bit more about communication moving forward momentarily. Anything that you'd like to add, Karen?
The student responsibility was an interesting conversation as well, as far as when you give students choice. And when we did find models that had some type of resource period for students, sometimes it had, it was differentiated for what it might look like for freshmen versus what it might look like for a senior. So we've had a lot of conversations as well around what the role of the student is to access their teachers, to access assistance when they need it, and even talking about what assistance and support looks like. So these bullets have hours and hours and hours of terrific discussion behind them. So, and these themes kind of emerged on their own through our work. These were just common themes that kept coming up as we were looking at different models and answering questions. So after spending many hours and doing a lot of investigating on the idea of that student resource period, the committee as a whole unanimously supports the idea of an SRP. So today, the committee can say, we're there with the SRP. We believe that the SRP can serve our students and our staff well, can meet the spirit of what we were hoping to achieve through the committee. The big questions that remain are, where do you place the SRP in the school day? What makes the most sense? How does it impact the school day? How do you add it? When do you add it? What, what has to happen to your school day in order to enable the SRP to exist and to meet our needs? So, you know, what does our school day need to look like? And we're, the vision is wide open. So today, while initially in the contract language, the goal was to bring forth a recommendation to say, would you react to this day or that day or, or these recommendations, the recommendation that we have at this time is based on the fact that we need more time. We need more time to study the school day schedules. We have quite an array of different models that we've looked at that we think certainly have some merit that could potentially meet our needs, but with something this big, we certainly don't want to move too quickly just to meet a November 1st deadline that we set for ourselves. And so what we would like to do is to move forward with the recommendation that the committee continue to meet between now and January, and that in January, the committee would come back to both boards and make a recommendation to the board about what a day might look like. It is certainly possible that we will have something to recommend for 13-14, but it's certainly possible that we won't have something to recommend for 13-14, and we may need some more time in 13-14 to firm things up and move forward the following year, or to do some piloting or work out some more logistics. But we feel pretty confident that by January, we can have a more definitive proposal to bring to the boards.
So with our task ahead of us, we'd like to share with you one subcommittee's idea about how to move forward. We think that communication at this point is going to be a very important component of any direction that this committee chooses to take by the time we're ready to present a, a model that we think will best serve the needs of all of the students in District 99. So our committee has started to develop a more of a formal communication plan for how to move forward. And our first step in that is informing everybody of our work up to this point and our plans moving forward. And then we plan obviously to continue informing everybody as the committee nears a decision or a recommendation, so to speak, to both boards. Additionally, we're working to gather some feedback from the feedback, or some, from the faculty, from students, and then from the community. And we'd like to do that in a manner that kind of is a little bit scaffolded. So the faculty has already been made aware of this recommendation to the school board tonight. We've invited them here tonight for some information, and like Mark had previously said, we're planning on being present at both North and South on Thursday morning before school and Thursday afternoon after school with representation from the committee to address this with the faculty, to discuss our progress up to this point and what we're planning on doing moving forward. We've put together an electronic suggestion box for questions and suggestions from the staff, so that as a committee, we can work through those and make sure that we're addressing concerns of the faculty in our work moving forward. A subgroup in our committee has started to develop a student survey to devote, to get some more information from students in terms of how they might use the SRP and what other needs are that perhaps we might not be fully aware of. And then once we have a better sense of where we're headed, then we plan to open up something similar to our e-suggestion box for the community, so we can start to address those concerns and be more informative that way as well. Okay? So questions or comments for us?
Any questions?
It's very thought provoking. It's hard to even think of the right questions to ask because it's such a broad subject. But obviously, you've put a lot of time, and I guess we can understand and we think why you need more time, because it's such a huge topic. Do you have an idea, and maybe I missed this, the length of time that this would be? It would be one full period or one?
That's a question that our committee is struggling with.
You're still doing that?
Right. Because, you know, like we had mentioned, in our goals of the committee and some of our driving question, our guiding questions, we have to consider preserving the academic programs that we have. So this is an incredible opportunity to provide interventions and additional supports for students who need them, but we want to do that without diminishing any of the current instructional programs. So that is one of the difficulties in making this recommendation. We want to make sure that we provide that kind of access time for students without disrupting other portions of the school day. And so that's one of the areas where we're struggling. So at this point, I would say, we couldn't tell you, you know, how long that timeframe would be, but we're, we're investigating different options and we'll evaluate, I suppose, as a committee, as we get closer, which one of those models best suits all of the needs of students and of the...
And to give a concrete example of what Ms. Edder was talking about with regard to maintaining the program, currently, we have an eight-period day, one of which is lunch. And our academic program is really based on the notion that a student can take seven courses a semester. So we are not going to create a schedule that only allows students to take six courses a semester, because that would have a, quite a chilling effect on our academic program. We also have to live within the parameters of transportation. You know, the, how early in the day we can get kids there and how late we can keep them there. Those are, those are parameters that we also have to live with. So really, the, the length of the period is somewhat dependent on the schedule we choose. And we've looked at a number of different ones. At this point, we add, we don't have a real deep understanding of any, but we've looked at a lot. So the, the schedule we choose really speaks to the, the length of that period, but we also realize fifteen minutes isn't going to cut it. You know, it's got to be, it's got to be of a length that allows the, the sort of work that we want to take place, both teachers and students and teachers and teachers taking place.
Does this contemplate a longer school day?
Could it?
Excuse me?
Could it?
Because I'm not quite sure how you fit all the pieces in.
Teachers in our contract have specified that we have an eight-hour workday, so that workday would not be extended, but how we utilize that time, how we utilize the minutes inside that eight-hour workday is something that's also being considered by the committee. Again, to maximize the, the time that's available within the workday and to maximize opportunities to help students during that time.
Including inefficiencies in the, in the use of time. Okay. I'll look forward to hearing more. Any other questions?
Let me just pose the question, I mean, we heard that there's unanimous agreement that looking at this is a good idea. Just curious, if I was sitting at home watching, I might ask, why? Why do we think that this is something that we might need to do? Are there things that we can point to that, that this would, this would address? Specifically, things that, that maybe we're, we're not meeting a, a standard or...
Certainly, we've had a lot of discussion about RTI.
Right. And I think time, Mike, is probably the biggest issue for both students and for teachers. For teachers, for, you know, not only RTI, but teachers are working on PLCs, the time with literacy, the time with assessment, the co-teaching. We, right now, are often subbing teachers out, pulling them out of their classrooms in order to allow them to collaborate and meet one another. We would, one of the goals is to reduce some of the times that teachers are out of their classroom for these other related meetings. And as far as students, just students having access, more regular access to their teachers throughout the school day. If students have after-school activities, obviously, they're limited in meeting with a, with a teacher before and after school.
Right.
If teachers are already coming in before and after school to meet with students, then it takes that time before and after school in the way from other things that they can do as well.
Right.
Meeting with colleagues. Any other specifics?
Well, we have many students who, you know, Mark had previously mentioned the transportation issue. We have a lot of students who have to take the bus to and from school, and so they're limited to the number of opportunities they have to access help from their teachers. Currently, some departments have resource centers available at the school, but that's staffed by any number of members of that particular department. So if, let's, again, you used a math example, a student needs help in math, they can attend the math resource center, but they would be receiving help from whichever math teacher is staffing that resource center at the time, which is a wonderful resource. But if that student could go during a particular time in the day and receive instructional help from their teacher, then that provides a different kind of experience that we think would be better for students. So we see some of our students who require more intensive interventions benefiting from this. from this, because they would be receiving them or able to better receive them from particular staff members. And we see students who, let's say, perhaps are on the other end of the spectrum, over-involved, have a full schedule, have a full schedule, before and after-school responsibilities, do not have a study hall during the day, also benefiting from the ability to access more teacher assistance. So we kind of, we think this is an opportunity to serve all students. And then, you know, as Lisa had said, eliminating some of those times when we have to substitute a teacher out would increase the instructional opportunities during the class time that they're actually leaving a class. And there's a possibility that we are working towards eliminating or reducing the number of PLC days, which, as you guys know, also disrupts the instructional school day and limits instructional time on those Wednesdays. So we think that those are all benefits to this program, and strong enough benefits to support this kind of idea.
Excellent.
From a preliminary standpoint, are you looking at a once-a-week model, a five-days-a-week model? What type of, preliminarily, what, what has the discussion been like?
Most of the models that we've looked at have modified schedules every day, every other day. So as regularly as we can build the, the time in, maybe alternating when certain teachers are available, when students have access to different content areas, just for the management of it all. We've looked at how to group certain content areas to, we, we know what areas students access most often, content areas, and so we would want to place them strategically for students to have access. But nothing more definitive than that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll probably have a lot more questions next time.
Item four B is the facility research report.
Thank you, Mr. White. As the board is aware, approximately a year ago, we initiated a new model for renting our facilities. It is also a strategic plan goal to make our facilities more available to the community. We certainly have to do this in a cost-reversal way, meaning we can't incur costs for the educational taxpayer to pay for recreational facilities. And we also have to protect the facilities, or the access to the facilities for our programs. So approximately a year ago, we came up with a concept of a facilities manager for the entire district. And the report tonight is an initial glimpse at what we've accomplished in the past year. We know we're not finished. We really have not been able to make our new artificial services available in the community, and I think there is a demand, and will be a demand for that. But that's, that's coming up. So Mr. Stalen and Mrs. Spear are going to make this presentation about facility usage.
And actually, I'm gonna do most of the, hopefully, quick PowerPoint just to hit the key items and then leave a few minutes at the end for any questions you might have. And Maureen is sitting back here. She's with us tonight in case you ask any real questions that I will have no clue how to answer, which could be quite a few. But it is, it's a complicated area. It's a very busy area, and I don't mind at all leaving this opportunity for Maureen to handle in our district. Overview quickly, you're gonna just, I'm gonna cover a couple of background factors that affect rentals. We, I just touched on the, the board policy and administrative regulation, which covers this area. Talked about a few of the goals of our current rental efforts, and a little bit of a paradox that falls in, in that, which we actually really accept and just want you to be aware of. And then a little bit of financial information, revenue recaps of where we've been the last couple of years in terms of rental income and where those dollars are going. And then finishing off with some expectations for the future. Prior to nineteen ninety-seven, we were in the height of an enrollment crunch, we were actually right on the brink of it. And we expanded our facilities through a master facility plan. It was a big project, really overall spent around sixty million dollars on, on facility additions. The biggest, from perspective of rentals, were the field houses, and that really sparked a new interest in having more use by the community and the community's excitement about having access to those large rooms. But also, it, it caused us to refocus a little bit on the way we use our facilities, the costs involved with facilities, and, and a more, I guess, focused approach on, on rentals. Our, love to have the scissors up there. Just gotta do something like that. But the factors that affect rentals, really, the, the context that we work in, in this area, we, in two thousand and six, ten, and eleven, some pretty significant budget cuts. And I apologize, I don't know how to stop slicing. But they were pretty heavy cuts. We, we reduced staff, we cut out after-school buses, which inconvenienced a good number of our students and families, and even got into some programs a little bit. And it caused us to take a look at the entire budget and say, okay, where are the little cracks? Where are the little pieces where we can bring more dollars in or stop money from flowing out of the district that doesn't really go directly into our educational programs? And that's what caused us really, much to this, to dismay of several community groups and individuals that had never had to be reviewed before. We, we had to look at, at the cost of our facilities and try and recover those. And basically, though, was fueled by the, the need or desire to avoid cuts in our ad fund budget. So we, we came up with a cost recovery approach to set rates. And we, we did some very detailed work. We have since updated it only slightly. It's probably due to be overhauled again, because we've done quite a bit of energy management work in the last couple of years. The initial costs we're using, and still rates that we're using now, were based on what our energy costs were at that time. But it included that. It included, what does it cost to take the pool covers off of the pools, and how much does it cost per hour, which is surprisingly high number. It's something at twenty dollars an hour to pull those covers off, with the, the water loss, the heat loss, the chemical loss, when, when all that water evaporates out of the pools. So those things were analyzed, and I think they're, they're probably due to be done again. But we did determine for every site that was being used, classrooms all the way to fields to field houses. And we also came through the board, working with the board at the time, different categorizations, and I'll cover those in a minute, but even to work through a surcharge on some groups if they're for-profit entities, to kind of bring money back into the, to the school. But for the most part, it's a, it's a cost recovery or out-of-pocket recovery cost. One exception, which is a, is a good reciprocal agreement, and that is, we still have an intergovernmental agreement for fields with the Donalds Grove Park District, and it's reciprocal. We use their fields at no charge, they use ours at no, no charge. But I just wanted you to be aware that, that is still in place, and I think was working well. Maybe now we've got the athletic directors who can probably let me know if it's not. Access issues, though, are, are things that, it's really, this is kind of the order of who has access to the fields and to the, the facilities that we have. District ninety-nine programming obviously is the top priority. Anything we need for our kids, our groups, our parents, our boosters, we have full access to our facility. But the Donalds Grove Park District does have second rights to anything because of our governmental agreement. Any field that's not being used for school purpose, they have immediate access to, or they have priority to use, which is fine. It's just the, the reality is, because we benefit from using their fields, they benefit by using ours. It's a usage of our, of our facilities that we don't get any dollars for. A rentals are a kind of mission, entities we call that are similar into our mission, our district feeder schools, there's, there's five feeders, District ninety-eight booster or booster clubs. When they want to do, have an event, they are A-type rental, and they are considered similar or, or mission that's same as ours. B rental groups would be nonprofit organizations primarily within district boundaries. And then C rentals would be those for-profits, and then any groups that really are, are really from outside of District ninety-nine completely. Board policy that covers this is eight point two oh. It's online. I didn't want to run it, you know, person in line to you, but it, it will cover these areas. Categories and rationale for charging for facility usage by others, it's the rates for use. It's the, and it's primarily to recover out-of-pocket costs. The fifty percent surcharge for, for-profit is, is an ad reg. And then it also goes to buildings for discretionary supply budgets. That's what, if we actually do charge whatever the B rentals are, we charge fifty percent charge, surcharge on for-profit entities. Those dollars go back to the buildings. And it was done at the time to try and encourage the buildings to spend more time with outside groups and to, because it is, and it was at the time when we developed this, an administrative responsibility of the assistant principals, and it was just one more thing on their plate. And so we tried to put a little bit of a, of a sweetener there to have them possibly spend more time on it than they would, they would like, because they'd rather be doing educational mission things. Just realized, because this is gonna go down quickly, that the version that I'm using is not the, the most recent one that I'm, I've been practicing with all day. So I'm not sure what the next few slides are gonna show us. We'll go right through them. The goals of the current rental efforts in the, in the district, really, is full-time focusing on the maximizing of our facilities. But it does, it, it does go against what we do in terms of another mindset, which is to, to maximize our facilities in a profit sense. We, we are, our, our focus really is to get access to the community. That was the original charge of this group. And even as we added Maureen's position as a facility manager, the thing, the thought was, well, of course, well, we're gonna make money on these enough to pay for it. Well, it's very difficult to do that. Now, we are covering that, but it's difficult to do that, because our primary focus are to those community groups that have the same mission as us, might have no fees coming in at all, and we're kind of eating those costs. And so what Maureen's battle is, is a kind of an uphill battle. It's is maximize the use of the facilities by our community groups, but don't charge them. You know, charge them as little as possible, and by the way, cover your costs and cover the other costs. So it's, it's a tough thing that she is doing. And we have a, a little bit of the, some financial information just to show you. It's, we've been doing a good job. Of course, now that these are good things, I'll say "we," and not just Maureen. But she is actually, through working with our building administrators, and you actually have two great ones here, that I've been working with, Maureen, with Denise and Randy, that it, it takes everybody working together to do this. This is the last five years, and if you look at the top grayish brown, that's the pool section, and I apologize for the coloring, but that's the pool revenue. So the first bar, just so we're on the same page, two thousand and, two thousand, two thousand and seven and eight is the first column. And it was, you know, somewhere between eighty, I think it was about ninety thousand dollars we had in total revenue, and about twenty-four thousand of that was from the pools. And at that time, we were on a contract with Donalds Grove Park District to run and operate our pools. And that's what they sent us at the end of the year, which was, was not what our costs were, but it was not bad. You move a couple of years down the road, and you see the pool dollars shrinking by the, by two thousand and nine, ten, and that's really when we stopped that agreement. Actually, the Park District decided not to continue that agreement. It, it was close to, I think it was four thousand dollars that we got. So it was a very erratic revenue source, and, and it was difficult for the Park District to build into their operating costs, our operating costs, and repay us. And I think that's really why that intergovernmental agreement just ultimately collapsed on its own weight. But if you look at what we've done with pools in the last couple of years, again, we, the, in two thousand and ten, eleven, and eleven, twelve, we've been able to expand that by, by going directly to renters. In the, in the prior agreement, if somebody wanted to rent our pools, with the, the agreement we have with the Park District, they could actually, they would rent it from the Park District. The Park District had our, use of our pools if we weren't using it for school purposes, so it was theirs to rent out. And so there were renters that were paying them dollars, which was in terms of supporting their programming, not our programming. So now we had dollars coming in to sort, support our programming. And a little bit different way to look at this through a pie chart is, this is just the last, this is three years ago, nine, ten, right before Maureen started. And it was really kind of a low point for us, sixty-three thousand dollars total revenues generated by rentals. And a good portion of that, the blue is athletic, the darker yellow is the auditorium. That small sliver there of lighter yellow is the ASC. Green would be classrooms, our other facilities, and then the larger pie slice there, the second largest one, nineteen percent of it was, was coming from pools. And if we look at the most recent complete year, and that's last year, the twenty-ten, eleven, I'm sorry, eleven, twelve school year, we've more than doubled the, the revenue from rentals. And a good portion of that coming from the pools, a good portion also coming from classrooms. There's a couple of key new renters that we had in, in twenty-eleven, twelve, that Maureen was able to work with and bring in, and, and those sometimes will come and go, but we're really proud that we did a good job this year in spite of the fact that our outside fields were under a lot of duress, and we were, we were doing a lot of work outside of the schools, and so really had to reduce available time for any of our, our other groups. Although field usage, at least in terms of the turf fields we have, not the synthetic, but the real turf fields, we don't charge a lot for those fields. It's really is just kind of a long-term cost recovery focus. And so even if we tripled the use of those fields, we wouldn't be generating a lot of revenue. The, the real money comes from inside facilities and even the pools, where we have a high-cost Future focus, we're gonna continue on increasing community access and usage, continue working with building administration in, in the Park District to coordinate and maximize times. That's, that's gonna be our goal. And actually, I have to apologize, I had a couple more slides. One was really to, to go through a little more detail with Maureen about, about what Maureen's been doing. She's working with our website, working on our website to get, use that as a tool to communicate the availability of the, our facilities to other renters, to actually have pictures of different typical classrooms on there, so that they can see what they'd be renting, kind of spark some, some more usage, and also to begin the application process online. So that's, that's a key thing that Maureen is doing now and what she's focusing on now. The last point that I have, though, is something that will be a recommendation to the board probably in the next month or two, and that is when we start to really, first, we need to understand what our usage of the synthetic fields is gonna be. And then we might even have a, you know, future change tonight being discussed. But, but we need to find out what our needs are. And, and now that we kind of have the fields selected, and let's see what they are, and let's get used to what, how, how much we need them after school, and how much available time is available for other groups to use those fields. They weren't put there because we needed a luxury, they were there because, based on need. And so we really need to, to see how it pans out over the first couple of years. We did the same thing with the field houses. We built the field houses, and we waited almost a full year, or maybe even a little bit more than a year, once, one school, just to see what our needs were, because it was a new space that we had to utilize. And that's what I think we'll, we'll be doing with the synthetic turf. But I also would like to set up a long-term plan where we actually do approach other groups that want to use that field. It, it can be used very heavily when it's open and when it's available. They're lighted surfaces, so we, we could use them a little bit later than sunset. And the reskining of those fields will cost, we're estimated, or it's been estimated to be about five hundred thousand dollars every ten to, five to, ten to fifteen years. So we'd like to put some, some of the rental dollars, charge a little bit more than just a cost recovery, charge a long-term kind of a reserve for us that we can build up, so that in fifteen years, we aren't trying to cover three new fields at a million and a half and wiping out our, our capital budget. So we want to be able to have an offset for that, and that would be the incentive for us to allow other groups to come on, and also put, put charge a, a fair rate to what, what's out there in the community. So that was the, actually, that was the draft before the weekend of this slideshow, and my, because we changed computers, I didn't have the most current one on this. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask myself and Maureen.
Questions?
I have one point, since you don't have one point, I was, I was, I did, we did some analysis on the, the use of the revenues. The hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in revenues that we collected in the eleven, twelve school year. Let's see, it was sixty-five hundred of that was collected for equipment and, you look, not utilities, but equipment and other pieces. Hundred and three thousand of that, though, was... $103,000 of that, though, was really for, not for a specific item. It was for, like, when we went to field out, we charged $10. And that's because we figured the average use of all of our grounds repairs to the fields on an hourly basis, about $10 an hour. So it didn't, we didn't take the $10 and put it into our grounds budget. It's just revenue there that's kind of helping offset our overall costs. And that $103,000 that we earned on those types of charges are what we're using to offset Maureen's salary. And it more than covers that. But it also covers the utilities and some of the other additional costs that are very difficult to analyze. It's hard to really say when a group comes into a field house per hour. We can, we can guess the wattage and things like that, but it's not an exact science. We're guessing at what the costs are. And what if they're sharing it with one of our teams that's in there? What's the real incremental cost for that? So we don't do that type of finite math on these. We just estimated what we think is a fair rate to charge for that facility that would cover that. And that's where we, we know we have more than $100,000 in facility recovery costs. We know that our costs are much less than that for the salaries involved.
I have a question about the, I guess they were what, A, B, and C rentals? What are the percentages of each?
The major, great majority are B. There's, I mean, other than the Downers Grove Park District, I mean, we didn't have the usage classified by that, that way. There's really not that many for-profit renters that come in. It varies from year to year. Sometimes we'll get a couple, we've had the White Sox organization come in for one thing. We've, we've had some groups. Generally, what happens is a nonprofit organization that isn't really filed as a nonprofit organization, they can't prove that they're nonprofit, falls into a C category. But I would say less than 5% of our renters are C-type. And other than the Park District usage, which is just a reciprocal agreement, what would you say is the, are A-types, the other missions? I mean, it's very limited. We have a couple of the junior highs, 58 will use our track and a stadium for graduation.
For graduations, track needs. We're seeing more fundraisers for their educational foundations, just like, or things like that.
Yeah, so again, maybe 5%.
Yes, occasionally a band bang with, or use cafeteria.
So we did, I didn't have it broken up by group. I had it broken up by facility. I probably should have gone across section for you. But yeah, so it's, it's, less than 10% are As and Cs 90% of the time. It's a B group. That's either a club team, or it's, Downers Grove uses baseball, but you know, it all fluctuates. A lot of it now has been classroom utilization by, what is it, Concordia?
Concordia, Caplin.
Right, a couple of COD at times. We'll use our facilities inside classrooms.
And you're saying that's grown a lot, the use of, by Caplin and other?
Those are new ones from '11, '12.
One second, Jill, can you bring her the microphone? I don't, I'm not sure what she's saying is getting on the tape.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Whether that has grown, that the use by Caplin?
It had, Caplin's new this year. Caplin's, they are for profit.
That's what I thought.
They are the ACT prep group. So they started with one session, and now they're up, they've signed five already. They've had, it's been successful. But again, it's C, but it's, you know, because the classroom's so inexpensive to rent, overall, the, you know, the total revenue's not high. But I think there's about $5,000 so far. The one thing we're seeing with the Cs, though, probably the largest space the Cs are using that brings in the most is the auditorium. And they love our auditoriums. We're getting dance groups. We had the ballet. We've had conference groups that come in and use not only the auditorium, but then they'll use the cafeteria for banquet and, you know, a lot of different spaces. So we're seeing not just a single use of one facility. By working with some of the groups, we're able to do a larger event and rent out more of the facility in a single event. So that's what we're seeing more so with the Cs. You know, where they, they like to have an event in the auditorium. They need other spaces to change and just sort of stage, you know, their performers. They use cafeteria, the band rooms. They bring in photographers to, you know, photograph their performers. So a lot more of the building gets used for those type of events. Yeah, so we're seeing a lot of interest because I think the word's out that, you know, the auditorium is available. We're, so we're getting a lot, a lot of inquiry. Our only challenge is, though, the schools use the auditorium so much during the year, but, yeah. But during the summer, we're actually booking up, you know, weekends in the summer already for a variety of groups. Dance groups, ballets.
What do we charge to, to rent out the auditorium? Do you know?
I want to say $100 an hour for C, I believe. It's either 50 or 75.
Depends on the equipment they need as well.
Yeah.
Separate charges for equipment.
Right.
Use lighting.
So with the PA, the lighting, if they use our choir, you know, risers, things like that.
Those are all added costs.
They're all added costs. And then, and then the district staff supervision. And people pay for our auditorium manager to do the lighting and the sound and things like that. So it adds up pretty quickly when they use the auditorium. But, you know, I think they're used to it. It's an expensive place to rent.
Do we, do we, right now, are we waiting for people to come to us? Or are we out trying to?
Just going to ask what?
Trying to?
A little bit of both. This first year's been more of a learning process to understand when the space is actually available. Because, you know, it's, it, we actually end up turning more people down than we have available time in the facilities. So to go out and like really promote, you know, people to come in, I think would be frustrating for people. But one thing we have, like the auditorium, for example, promoting that in off-season during the summers, you know, it's wide open during the summer. And other than field camp, or summer camps, you know, most of the fields and the gyms and other spaces are open. So it's really been learning, you know, working with the ADs and the athletic, or activities directors to understand when they have the space and then what's, what's sort of left in, you know, daylight hours that people still want to rent the space.
This may be somewhat anecdotal, but I, as a parent of children in the area here, I know, for instance, District 58, Downers Grove Children's Choir has a big event, you know, twice a year. And we pack the kids into O'Neill's Gym and Herrick's Gym, and there's never enough room. And it seems like, you know, that would be a great.
Right.
So I wonder if there are a few things we might try to reach out that could, that would really?
And I think I've actually spoken to people about that group. But our challenge is when they're doing, yeah.
Right.
You know, when we do a play, the auditorium, the stage is set up for maybe a month. So it's like blocked.
That's it.
For a month. And then we have lots of, you know, orchestra performances and choir groups and things like that. So it's really a challenge during the year, which is exactly when, you know, the districts are looking to use the space as well. So, you know, but the nice thing about having, I think, one person doing the whole district is if North is busy, South might be free. So, you know, I can look at the calendar and try and, you know, offer them an alternative if the school that they wanted to use originally was, you know, booked. And I think that's a benefit of having one person doing it because it gives everybody one point of contact. You know, the renters, even the schools, you know, I'm sort of, it all lands on me now. You know, it's like anything with rentals, you know, call Maureen, so.
But even when they book, like, let's say, the auditorium, and they need lighting and they need sound, even if it's in the off-season, let's say in the summertime, we have to find staff then.
Right.
To actually come and do, I mean, that's a whole nother element to that, too.
Right.
Right?
Yes, we do. But fortunately, we have a staff that's willing to work during the summer.
Yes, we know that, okay.
So, you know, we, we've got that lined up. That's what? It hasn't, well, no, it hasn't, actually. Because the majority of them are, you know, happy to have some extra hours.
And I assume things are going pretty well with the, with the pool rentals. I know we had a bit, a bit of a to-do earlier, yeah.
Well, so far, so good. You know, I cross my fingers that we get through the full season without any glitches. You know, we have a few. We've had to learn how to work around all the meets and, you know, all the different things that are going on and moving. But again, having two pools, it's kind of nice because if North's having a meet and we have to displace somebody from North, if South's not having a meet, you know, sometimes we can move them there. I actually brought our, just so you could see our little, this is our pool schedule now, all the different groups. And it's, that's the non-high school groups. So this is the rental.
Okay.
So basically, seven days a week, we have.
Pretty busy.
People coming in. So, yeah, so, so far, so good. You know, a few glitches we had to, to get through, but.
One additional thing I bring up, I've, I've heard from some other, from some parents, actually several, that our members have their children in some of the swim clubs.
Mm-hmm.
And there's been some, some complaining about at North having to park in the lot over.
Yeah, at Main Street.
You know, have to walk all the way over. I've been telling people that this is a pretty new, new process for us. Some of the things we heard tonight about getting used to our new facilities and how those things will work in addition to all the new parking we have at North.
Right.
So as go, as time goes on, we might evolve in terms of what we're able to allow and?
Well, and it depends on what day of the week they're coming to. You know, often, it's because there's no parking available because the high school teams practice and they have games. And, you know, there's a lot of activity going on. So that lot over on Prince is fairly small compared to what it used to be.
That's right.
You know, so we've just suggested to people that go to Main Street. Clearly, you know, if the space is there, they can park in it. But, you know, we try and direct them to Main Street, you know. And I think that some of the coaches actually don't mind that because they would prefer the parents actually don't come to the practice. So if they have to walk all the way in, you know, drop them off and go. And, but yeah, it's, it's, you know, it is what it is, so. They'll just get a little more exercise walking from Main Street.
We're also, we've also been really encouraging our, the North parents to park in the Prince Street lot when they're picking up kids. That was part of our commitment to the neighborhood.
That's right.
To get that parking off their streets. And thus far, the North administration's done a great job, which is acknowledged by the community of doing that. So, you know, I can see, especially when you're considering they're picking up kids from all sports and activities.
Yes.
Right.
That, that lot could be quite full on most weeknights.
Right.
So, speaking of the pool, how many outside groups do we have besides our District 99 ones that rent the pool?
We have three club teams, Express, Hornets, and Wheaton.
Okay. And other facilities, are they being utilized by Hornets-type people or Wheaton people?
Other facilities?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what your question is.
Like fields.
Fields.
Oh, other, oh, other club teams that come in?
From other schools, yes.
Well, I don't know if you'd say from other schools. They come from all over the dis, I mean, they're club teams. So they're, I don't think there's any, you know, delineation as to where they live. They join a team. But yes, we do typically here at South on Sundays, we're booked from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night every Sunday. And that's with softball teams, baseball teams. We're busy with the Park District, indoor soccer. We have some more.
That's not the question I asked.
Okay, I don't, I'm not understanding.
The question I ask is, are there other facilities utilized by other schools? And the Hornets are attached to Hinsdale South. Wheaton is attached to Wheaton schools.
Wheaton College.
Are we utilizing our facilities with other schools besides District 99?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, I mean, it's normal for swim teams to have two pools.
I'm just, I'm just asking because there are other facilities that are available to, to other schools also. And we're not promoting them, but we are promoting our school pools.
My recollection from last summer was that there are District 99 residents in all those clubs.
Absolutely.
There are, there are in baseball that there are people from District 99 who play at Westmont, who play at Lyle, who play at other places. I guess I'm just asking if those people are utilizing our facilities also, besides just our pools.
Yeah, I think the distinction, I don't disagree, that's probably the correct analysis. But the distinction is that they would probably drive past 200 or 300 ballfields and open fields to get here and probably two or three other pools. So pools, when we started this whole issue of looking at, the analysis with the Downers Grove Park District and kind of taking back control over the pools, there was, I mean, people go down to University of Illinois Circle for pool time.
That's right.
So the, that is, it's like ice time to hockey. If we had an ice rink, we would have teams from 100 miles around thinking about it, you know. So it's, it's that kind of a commodity that made us think of that, you know, and using. And actually, the benefit of having those groups in actually is benefiting our Express team because, because we were able to utilize the pool so heavily. We dropped their rate from $50 to $30 an hour. So there's some, it's not directly backed into our ed fund, but it does help our local, what we would call our local team by a percentage of individuals on the team. So, you know, so there's, it is an unusual thing. I won't, I won't disagree.
And Wheaton's a C rental, too.
Right, because they're.
They're for profit.
Really?
Mm-hmm. It's just how they organize.
Point is, good point.
How soon will we look to start renting the artificial turf fields?
Well, like you said, I, she's ready to go, you know. There's people calling her about it. I think we want, particularly at North, getting a second field there. We need to get, I think, some experience with it. It'll be, that'll be the next thing. Next spring will be a push. I think we will be using, renting some of it next spring. But I, these two are the ones that need to get comfortable with, with the reprogramming with this new space. And, and I think that, and we don't want to make a move until they're comfortable with it. And it's hard to do, you know, it's hard to, so I'd like to say next spring we'll have some in, but it won't be as heavily as it will be, I would bet, five years from now in the spring. I think, I think we'll, it'll, it'll ramp up.
Any other questions? Twenty-one? Okay, we can conclude this person's presentation. I'll move on to 4C, which is the discussion of lacrosse. Dr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. White. As the board is aware, District 99's been approached by a local youth lacrosse program to register that program as an IHSA emerging sport for this year. And to this point, frankly, we've declined that request. And the most important reason being that we believe registering the program, in essence, means we've added the program to our athletic program in District 99. And to do that without a formal decision-making process and all the things that go into that is problematic. And it's problematic namely because there are, in fact, a number of groups who have made similar requests to the administration, boys bowling, boys and girls water polo, boys hockey over the last several years. So we believe to simply add a program without the process that, A, we can consider all the variables, and B, that all groups have the same access to the process, puts the board and the administration in a difficult position. Now, this is clearly an athletic department issue. And so I have asked our two athletic directors, Denise Kavanaugh from Downers Grove North and Randy Constance from Downers Grove South, to participate in this presentation tonight. I would say each has researched lacrosse requests thoroughly and has aspects, and too many aspects of this question. And so at least initially, I'm going to, I think Denise is going to start, is that correct?
Sure.
And then we'll go to Randy, and then back to me. And then we'll go to Randy, and then back to me.
Okay, well, Mark talked about the process being a very helpful tool for us because we do have other interested parties. So I think in your packet, you received sort of a flow chart that, for, of our process, some of the items we've been doing, some are good additions and, and good things to put into place. The first one is to continue our biannual student interest survey. We do that already, we have a biann, biannual survey, but this year, in February, what we like to do is do the classes 2014 through 2017, so get a larger, solid piece of data from the district. So both Randy and I would conduct that survey and, and get more data than we typically usually do. We think it's a good idea to do, to see who's all out there and wanting to participate. So that would be in February, and then we take some time to analyze that data. The other thing we put into place is an official proposal, which you have in your packet that you would see there, which our activities groups do as well for an activity. And that proposal would be submitted to the athletic director of each school. The ADs would use the data, plus that survey, gather as much information as possible to decide to move that forward to a committee, making sure that all those pieces were, were in place. At that time, we would take it to a committee, as you see there, a controller, we'd need Mark to talk about finances, facilities, there's a lot of pieces in adding a, a sport. We would need human, human resources to see if we have teacher on, teachers on staff that can coach, or we have to hire someone, and what those processes are as, as well. So there's quite a bit involved with that, as well as sustaining a program if one goes into effect, making sure we have the numbers and everything there. So then, if we have everything all in place, we would come to the board for your approval, and then we'd be able to plan. And communication would be really important because, I would use an example that, let's just say girls lacrosse, let's say that everyone said that we're ready to rock with that, we're ready to go. We would need to not only communicate to the community on that, but girl soccer, because we know that's going to have an effect on that. So that coach would need to know how many kids are coming back the following year, and that could affect how many fields we use and how we use them. So that's just an example of how it can really affect others in the same season. So that would be the process that would be in place that would be very valuable. Also, what we know is that the currently the IHSA sports, as you could see, also I handed that to you, boys bowling, which is already a current sport, we, I would say that that would be the next one that I have the most, and Randy as well, interest to start boys bowling. We already have girls bowling, and that's currently a sport. And then girls and boys water polo as well, some information on that, always people asking, you know, when that would come to light. In emerging sports, we know lacrosse, very popular, building steam, no question, and also boys ice hockey, which we have a club sport in our area as well for that. The IHSA, to give you some information, when water polo occurred, they have this emerging sport box that they want the school to check. So at that time, swim programs were asking the schools, could you please check this box for us, so we can get that number there? So the IHSA would support and have a state tournament for water polo. So the clubs did that, and the schools checked all the boxes, and the board, IHSA board is very cautious now because once they checked the box, they went to have a state tournament, which was a financial, big financial situation, and the people who checked the box didn't enter the teams. So now, the IHSA is being very cautious, let's just say with lacrosse or anything else, it's an emerging sport, to make sure not only do you have the teams, but that they will participate in the state tournament. So that's, I just kind of got educated on that in doing some research this year. So I just think for me, the fact that there's other sports and interests, we have to have a process to make sure we're fair to everyone when we're going to support it. But I'm a fan, I, I'm hoping, I hoping we get lacrosse as soon as possible, so it's great, so.
Well, I, I think you're going to hear a lot of overlap. A couple of things that I'd just like to point out. First of all is that when we do register as an emerging sport, there are going to be obligations that we have as a district. There, we're going to have to be IHSA compliant in every way. Some of those things would be weekly and semester academic checks. We would have to make sure that the coaches are properly certified, that they've taken that performance-enhancing drug exam, that they're rating officials, watching the rules meetings, all of those type of things, we're going to have to make sure. Overseeing that their season limitations are being withheld. So there's some obligations from being IHSA compliant, and I think, as Denise mentioned, there's also some obligations of district policy. We would have to post those coaching positions, as per the contract with, with the uni. But the athletes would have to register through our offices, they would have to pay our athletic fee. We would have a duty to transport those athletes, just like we have that duty with all of our other students, hire and pay the officials. So there's lots of other obligations that come with that, I just want to make sure that everybody, everybody understands. And I think, the other thing for me, and again, I think it's a little bit of an overlap, is that I, I think it does open up the district to some possible OCR challenges with equity. Denise mentioned the equity with other groups that have already come forward and would like to be added to the program, boys bowling, for example. I think there's some equity issues there, and that if we add lacrosse at this time, are we being somewhat arbitrary in our treatment of those other groups? The other equity piece is Title IX. Without delving into it too deeply, the Title IX compliance framework, component one, is sports offerings. Now, there's three prongs to that test, but one of those prongs is history and continuing practice of program expansion. And so I think where everybody lands anymore is if we're going to expand programs, if you expand to boys, you need to have some component there for the girls as well. Without having that interest survey, I honestly can't answer you what that, what the best one would be at this point. So I think we'd be a little bit premature in trying to add a girls' component at this point. So, those are just the things I wanted to point out to everybody as well.
Another consideration here is cost. And, and I'm saying that, understanding that I have talked to representatives of the lacrosse club, and they've indicated to me that the club would finance a portion, or perhaps all the costs of the program, should we agree to register it this year. But realistically, over time, the program cost would fall to the school district. It wouldn't seem proper to have an athletic pro, have the range of athletic programs we have, and then one out here that the parents pay for completely. So over time, we have to consider that. Right now, our estimate, our estimates are that a cross, a lacrosse program would cost between $45,000 and $50,000 per year. And this includes coaching stipends, equipment, transportation costs, cost for game officials, pay for game workers.
Boys and girls, or just-
That's for one program.
And is that for both North and South?
Well, at, at present, I believe the request is for a co-op program, for students from each school would be in one program. But I, I also understand, talking to colleagues, lacrosse is popular, and so we would expect that over time, we would go from one program in each building. And then the, as Randy discussed, the issue of equity in terms of Title IX, we would be adding girls' programming, and the cost of that program, you know, whatever it is, has to be factored into. And, and I make that point only because we are sort of in a precarious financial situation at this point because of the pending pension legislation that's supposed to occur sometime between the election tomorrow and when the new legislature is seated in Springfield. And so, we could get a large bill from that, we don't know what it is at this point. So that's just another consideration in terms of now and the future in terms of adding program. And I, I would also concur with Randy and Denise in that this is not about lacrosse, because we believe lacrosse is a good program, this is about a number of different factors that we have to consider in moving a decision like this forward. Any questions for us?
What would be the timeframe with the biannual survey to make a decision next spring?
Well, I believe that-
The sequence of time.
I believe the time, the timeframe would be, the survey would be in February, we would have time to analyze results. As you can see, that we've developed a, a form that would allow interested students or their parents through the students to recommend a program directly. We would establish a group that would analyze all the requests, and that we would make a recommendation to the board, I would say around June, for adding programs or not, and what programs that we would add. So we're talking about a process that would begin in February, and that would end in June, and we're talking about a process that would probably occur in two years from now on.
What about the, the sports that are currently waiting in line, I guess?
I think they'd be considered as well.
So those would be on the survey also?
They'd be on the survey, yeah.
And-
And they'd also have the opportunity to request inclusion.
Okay.
But that, an opportunity to compare levels of interest and analyze costs, right?
Right. Okay.
How does this compare with the ice, the ice hockey teams that exist now?
Well, ice hockey is an emerging sport.
Right.
We know there is an ice hockey program in the community.
Right, there is.
The ice hockey program has in the, historically requested that they be given similar consideration. We have not, although that, that was before my time as superintendent, that district did not give that consideration. But there has been a request in the past.
If I recall, it was sort of the same issues that are coming up now.
Would it be fair to say, Dr. McDonald, that this is more of a timing issue, as well as, I think, one of those unintended consequences? If we do X because we really want to do X, there's Y and Z factors to also consider, most notably IHSA regulations and things of that nature. Would that be fair to say?
I think it's very fair to say.
Any other questions? Well, I basically concur with the administration's decision, but that does not in any way judge what happens at the spring process. That is an opportunity to, to allow full investigation. And if lacrosse is a spring sport, if there were to be a successful decision in the spring, next year will be, you know, but it's something where we don't yet have all the data, the information, all the analysis hasn't been done yet. Is that against something else that's fair to say? That we don't know yet quite all the details that would be involved?
I think that's fair to say. I think that's the purpose of a process.
Right. Okay.
And also, that, that would mean determining whether we've got field space and field time and all that, it's all part of-
Impacting other programs, everything. Any other questions or comments?
Appreciate the homework.
Very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one other question. Do we need to work on a policy then, on how to bring this forward and what to do besides this, or?
I think we, we have a process. There is policy or administrative regulation language that says, that says we, we, we bring requests forward-
This way.
-for the board.
Okay.
It, it's not clearly articulated in terms of athletic additions. It's frankly, when, as we have searched through the policy, it's much better articulated for clubs and activities. We presume that the intent was all things of this sort, but in fact, athletics is typically more complicated than activities and clubs because the, it's a much larger issue, with the costs are different. We, we can have clubs and activities for a couple thousand dollars, that's clearly not the case with an athletic program.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, that'll conclude this discussion. We then move on to, I guess, yeah, there's something visitors now, that's, okay. At this point, any member of the community is allowed to come forward and talk to the board approximately for three minutes on any topic involving District 99. And if you come up, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm John Garzulo, 838 Sheridan Place in Downers Grove. I'm the head varsity coach and director for the Downers Grove Lacrosse Club. So just want to thank you all for considering lacrosse and looking into the possibilities of getting us into the high school next year, hopefully. What I wanted to talk about though was, does everyone know the circumstances of why we tried to approach you so early? And it, would, would you like me to kind of explain it?
A couple of minutes, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, articulate.
Okay, so, what's that?
You can tell it's something.
Okay, so, we've been in existence for about eight years. I've been running the program for about, about three years, and we've played in a club league pretty successfully. We've, we've been in the playoffs every year and done very well and very competitive. Over the past several years, we, the, the league we played in was NILAX, and there was, when that league first started, about 30 teams. Over the course of past several years, we've had these clubs sign the emerging sports agreement with their high schools, and our league has slowly, you know, dwindled down. So we lost, this past season, we had about 14 teams in our NILAX league, we lost nine of them, and the league folded. So we've historically had about anywhere between 50 and 65 players in our club. We fielded JV and varsity team. And, you know, I have to say, Randy, thank you for taking my phone calls a few weeks ago. We found out our league folded, and I panicked and called Randy, I said, what are we going to do? So, you know, we looked into the feasibility and the possibilities of bringing us in for the spring. So I, I appreciate Board and Administration for explaining the circumstances and situation, why this is, you know, out of process, and what it would mean to other groups and organizations. Completely understand that. But what I just want to make sure is, while we're considering this, you know, we've got, you know, I've been driving home, we're a boys' program, boys' program. We are a co-ed program. We don't have a home right now for girls to play. That's, that's coming. We have, in Downers Grove, you know, to discuss a little bit about the popularity of the sport, we have, you know, we're working with the Park District on, on a youth program, which we did have for a number of years. It kind of fell off because the organization that ran that program left town. New Wave Lacrosse is coming to town this spring with the Park District to field a youth boys' program. For the past several years, we had the IGLA, which is an organization that runs girls' lacrosse throughout the area. They've had a Park District program for the past two years, and those kids are coming up. And I have a little bit more interest because I have two daughters that play in elementary school. But we are fully prepared also, along with our boys' program, to bring in a girls' program. And we will have, if we started the program in 2014, we would have enough girls immediately without going out to any other groups in the school district to field a full freshman Just some really simple facts about our, our club. Thirty percent of our graduating class every year, we graduate about 12 players a year, go on to play in college. More than 40% of our District 99 kids, and up until this point, you know, we only have one kid that, because we're a club, we can take kids from other schools, but we've tried to adhere to just being a strict District 99 program. So that one player would be graduating this spring, and from this point forward, we're all District 99. But, forgot my point. But with all that being said, we're, we're just striving to make sure that, that we're adhering to the IHSA rules as best we can. Right now, all the teams that have signed the emerging sports agreement are in the IHSLA, which is really a holding pen for all these teams until the state sanctions the sport. We thought we were going to sneak by this spring, Randy, I don't know if you saw it, but there was some legislation that was going to allow IHSA teams to play club teams, but that got turned out. But needless to say, we'll, we'll be patient, we will, we'll help you guys in any way possible to make this process easy. We'll be okay this spring, we'll get by this spring. But just, wanted to just let you guys know that we are a, a full program that's been around for a, a good number of years. We've got 300 alumni, and, and every year, I mean, it just seems to follow, we have an alumni game at the end of our- have an alumni game at the end of our season and it gets, it getting larger and larger and larger. This sport has grown, I hate doing this to percentages, but it's grown five hundred and twenty-nine percent since nineteen ninety in the U.S. and about five hundred percent increase over the past ten years in overall participation, both at the boys' and girls' level. This is coming.
I think it is coming, definitely. I very, very much want to thank you for your passion, okay?
Oh, yeah.
It's obvious. And I also want to thank you for your courtesy and understanding of the constraints that the administration's under, you know, and I think, you know, with the type of interest you're talking about, I think you can make a very strong case. How it's gonna come out depends on things, I don't know all the facts of-
Right, right.
Nonetheless, you know, the passion's obvious, the number of students, the, the number of players that are here, the parents that are here, you know, there's no doubt that that's what you want, you know, and that there's a lot of community support. But as the Board, we need to hear from the administration as far as what logistical constraints they're under, taking into account the needs of everyone else.
Right.
Work through the process, you know, I think they've been explained to you, it's been, my experience, administration's extremely good at keeping you informed of that stuff.
Yep.
You know, and we'll probably, I'm sure we'll be seeing you again in a few months.
You'll be seeing you a lot. And, you know, Randy, with this program and, and, you know, just to, with this program comes with our coaching staff, we've got over a hundred and twenty years, sorry, we've got a hundred, over a hundred and twenty years of coaching experience. Just for myself, my background really quickly, I've been playing this sport since I've been ten years old, played in college, played on the semi-pro level. It's taken me all over the world and I'm just giving back to, and my coaches as well. We do this absolutely for free because we absolutely love it and we're just gonna make this monster for you. We want to eventually bring you guys a state championship, so, thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any, anybody else?
My name is Mike McAlire. I am a Bowling Brook resident in the school district. I am both a, a parent of three Downers Grove South students, two have graduated, one's still here, a sophomore, as well as one of the coaches for the club. And similar to John, my background, grew up on the East Coast, started playing lacrosse in ninth grade, was lucky enough to be good enough to play in college. I was thinking I was gonna go to a community college before I started hearing from coaches, so, this sport gives an opportunity to people, to kids, to students. I had that opportunity, my son has had that opportunity. He goes to Augustana College and plays lacrosse there. He came through this program and we've got a, a lot of players here who have an opportunity to play at the club level, will have an opportunity to play at the high school level. And what I've seen, from my perspective as a parent here in the district and a coach, is that we have a lot of student athletes who don't play baseball anymore as they grow up or don't play football after a year or so. There's a lot of kids here in this school, in this district, and this sport will give other kids an opportunity that they may not have without, without a lacrosse program. And I respect the, the Board's process that has to happen and I, I understand, I, I'm hoping this survey will, will prove that there is a big demand in this district for that sport, as opposed to some other sports who rightfully want to get in here. So, again, we, we run this program as good as any high school program that I've seen and I, as John said, I don't know how many years of experience, but I've got a lot of those years on our staff, so, between high school, college and afterwards, so, but we run a, we run, we run a really good program, we give kids an opportunity. We teach, just like the school, sports here in the school do and the district do, along with educators and parents, we're teaching these kids and, you know, we'd like an opportunity eventually to be in, in the schools here, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name's Mike Underdown. I've been in Downers Grove about thirteen years. I've been coaching, actually, youth football since two thousand and one. I've been training Downers North athletes since two thousand and eight in personal training, strength and condition. I can attest to these guys, my son started playing for them in sixth grade, he's a junior now, in lacrosse. He also plays football at North. By the way, well, we got, we got this one in the bag. Trust me, I, you know Lyle Residence, right? So, the point, the point is, is there's some real talent and incredible dedication by, by Mike and John and, and the rest of the staff that, you know, I mean, I've, I coached the little guys, Panthers, two thousand and one, all the way up. Every kid that's playing now played for me at some point and I couldn't get away from its ways, called Denise and said, "Hey, can I train him?" So, you know, the long story short, you know, I, I do have some experience training professional athletes, Tommy Zbikowski, Chris Brown, a few of the others. These guys know what they're doing. They know how, the fundamentals of every game and how to move people around. I can attest to that, I can speak to it, I can point to other trainers and say, "What do you think they're doing?" And they'll say, "They're doing a phenomenal job." These are real people doing real jobs for free. We need this program for so many reasons. I just got back from Concordia with my son, who's a junior. Marquette coach said, "That was tremendous defense, kid. How did you play that well?" See the guy in a striped shirt? That's the only reason. He's the long pole guy. He's the one who said, "How to break down, how to whack 'em. Hey, why aren't you hitting 'em?" That's the whole thing, but that's what it takes, it's a guy like that to, to get in his face. We need to do these things. He's a four-point-two GPA, he's going to do stuff. But if you don't have a school to play with, what's he gonna do? Marquette's gonna call and go, "Who'd you play for, kid?" "Nobody, didn't have a team." We can't have that. Those guys back there and about eighty others, and I can't tell you how many more, just because they don't know, because they can't play, it's obscene. We need to have a game. We need to have a game. The kids need to play. We have tremendous fields. You have built phenomenal fields. It would be obscene and every time I drive by and I see nobody on 'em with the big fences now, are you kidding me? Everybody should be on 'em, every minute of every day. Why is doorhofer, I drive by a doorhofer every day and there is not a minute that that field is not lit from six AM to twelve PM, that's in twelve at night, I mean, twelve AM, I should say. There is a soccer game, a lacrosse game, a foot, semi-pro football game, there's something being played. Shame on us as a community to not utilize every aspect that we have. And every aspect is those guys back there. And you might say, "Oh, hey, you got a lot of guys here." We told them not to come. We told them not to come, they showed up anyway. Way to lop an house. All I'm saying is, we got a lot to offer, we got a lot to do. Let's come together, figure out a way to make this work. I know we got political issues, we can't get everything done this season, but let's come together and figure out a way to make it work. I already train in the school, I'll help whatever we gotta do, I'll figure it out, we can all figure it out, but we gotta come together and figure out a way. That's all I'd like to see as a parent, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
My name is David Gumm, I live at twenty-two, twenty-five Midhurst Road in Downers Grove. I have two boys currently at the school, I have a senior and a sophomore. My senior, both of them have played soccer. My senior boy made it freshman year on the soccer team and was cut his sophomore year. Never picked up a soccer ball since. Fortunately, we knew Mike and he picked up lacrosse and he's played lacrosse since then. And I think it's a testimony to how important to me as a parent and as a taxpayer that a program to allow a kid to stay in a team sport was around. I know we had, um, great coaching, we've been available to great coaching and growing up, my experience, the team sport was just, was just super important. I want to testify as a parent that I've had him go through the freshman year in the soccer program and it was a great experience for him. And I have to say that Coach John and Coach Mike have produced the same results. They've, their attention to detail and their coaching, working with the kids have just been great. So, as a parent that's never played the sport, knew nothing about it, but fell in love with it, but to me, it's more important, the value, to have something else for the kids to go to, to play besides just football, soccer, basketball. Thank you for your honesty, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. What we'll do now is close the public comment portion, I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. I'm sorry, come on, just come on up, we'll reopen it, come on.
Hi, I'm Zach Messer. I moved here from Pennsylvania this year, out on the East Coast, I live in Woodridge and I go to Downers Grove North. And all I have to say is, I went to a school called Parkland, we had lacrosse as a school sport and as a team, we really did a lot for the school, you know, we had fundraisers that we did, we helped support, you know, we paid for a lot of stuff ourselves by fundraising and all that. And I just think that it would really benefit the school and, you know, the people who play because right now, I, I know me, along with everyone else, we're really sad and, you know, really upset because we have, you know, we don't have anything to do. We're gonna play pickup games, possibly, no championship, you know, no recognition and it's kind of depressing. But, you know, I just, I really hope you guys take into consideration that, you know, we went out, we got hundreds of signatures and I don't know what for, but we went out, we entered the community, we asked people what they thought about the sport, the sport, they said, you know, "Yeah, I'd love to see that happen, I'd love to see the schools gain lacrosse as a sport, it's cool." And, you know, we've got hundreds of signatures, I have three sheets and my house filled out, so, I just, I think we have the support of the community and I know a lot of the teachers at our school would love to see it. And I realize that the rules and regulations dictate, you know, you have to wait, but I realize, I also think that you guys should take into consideration these circumstances that we are in right now and just possibly make an exception or if not, work hard and help us out because we're in a, you know, not a very, not a very good situation right now. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ryan Tealy and I'm a sophomore here at Downers Grove South. This is my first year ever playing lacrosse and I played my first game Saturday, I had a blast. And the reason I did it, I started it because I have a whole bunch of friends who do it, you know, so, like, they brought me into it and I just realized how popular it was and how much fun I had doing it. And I really wish that, like, I knew about it earlier, like in seventh grade, seventh, eighth grade, I would've started a lot sooner and I would've had a lot more fun. And at Downers Grove South here, I'm on the swim team, so, I, it's a team sport, but also a personal sport. And it's not, lacrosse, like, swimming isn't the same as lacrosse, like, you're a part of something, even though, like, all these crazy kids over there, you know, just, they dragged me out to a board meeting on a Monday, they didn't tell me it was two hours, like, like, I, I, but, you know, we wait till the last forty minutes to talk about lacrosse, but, you know. Just for starting up like this, I'm happy I came to, like, give my support and I just met the coaches this year and they're, they're really great guys and just wanted to show that as, like, a new, new lacrosse player, like, how it works and how much I enjoy it.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Drew Bullock, I'm a junior here at Downers Grove South. I started off playing football, I started when I was fourth grade, I think, playing Panthers and I played all the way up till my freshman year, but I ended up getting a back injury and my doctor wouldn't allow me to play three sports, that includes wrestling, football and rugby or hockey, but luckily I was allowed to play lacrosse, so I picked it up my sophomore year and I fell in love with it instantly. Coach John, Coach Mike are wonderful coaches, they taught me everything I know now and they're like another father to me, they helped me out when things got rough and when my mom was diagnosed with cancer, my team was there for me. And they bought me actually a stick, they all threw in money and they're like another family to me and it's kind of sad that we don't have a season, but I realize that there's other sports and other people that want their sports to be also made a school sport, but I feel like there's such a demand for lacrosse. And when we were going out with those, trying to get signatures, talking to parents and so many people just started saying like how they were just realizing, like, this sport and how, like, unique and how cool it was and I, I feel like that, I mean, hopefully the survey says the same thing, that people truly will love this sport and it gives people an opportunity that aren't able to make the baseball team and aren't able to make the soccer team, or in my case, aren't able to play a sport any longer, to really pick up something else that they can play and really enjoy and luckily meet such great people and new friends. So, thank you for your time and thank you for letting us come here today and bother you with all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, my name's Dylan Tyzik and I started playing lacrosse nine months ago. Like, I was terrible the first time I went out, couldn't pick up a ball, couldn't catch the ball, it would hit me in the chest, everything, like, thought about quitting, but now, like, my brother's too into it, my family's too into it, like, and once I got hooked on it, like, the second practice, once I finally tracked a kid, like, it felt good, like, that's all I, that's all I could do. So, all I did was try to whack people, but then I started playing the game and I fell in love with it. And that's all I've been doing for the past nine months, like, every day I'll go out and hit the wall for like thirty minutes and hitting the wall means, like, you literally stand at a wall and just toss it at the wall because you have no one else to play catch with. So, I would do that every day and, like, I text John, I text, like, the whole team every, every day and say, "Hey, guys, you guys wanna go out to a wall? We go, we go, we get kicked out of places, but, you know, it's totally okay." And, like, a couple of months ago, I joined this travel team called New Wave and it's everything, like, high caliber lacrosse, it's a lot of fun, we go to Florida, it's, it's a ton of fun, but, like, to know that that's the only chance I'm gonna get to play a real game and I can't play, like, with my team here, like, we could play pickup games and scrimmages this season, but the only chance I could get to play legit games is paying thousands of dollars to go to Naperville to play, like, paying for their programs. I just think it's like a shame that I have to do that and I can't, like, just experience it with the school, like, if I'm willing to pay thousands of dollars to go play in Naperville, I'm willing to pay it here in the Downers Grove, so, I don't really think funding's a problem, like, we're willing to pay whatever, like, we're in love with this game, like, lacrosse is more than a sport, it's like a brotherhood, like, we're a family, like, it's everything. All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Carl, cause I'm a sophomore here. I play on, like, a travel team right now and in the spring, all the girls on the team go to their respective schools and play with them, so we don't have practices or, we, like, pretty much lose contact until the winter. And, like, so the first year that I had that, I didn't really know what to do because, you know, lacrosse is my favorite sport. And that's when I'm, fun of, DG LAX, it sort of, like, gave me the opportunity to keep my skills up, keep playing, stay active. And, I mean, it really didn't matter that I was the only girl on the team, they treated me like one of the guys, like, I, I went out with them and got the petitions, I hang out with them, I practice with them, like, and, I mean, the coaches don't, like, take it easy on me just because I'm a girl and that's, I love that because- on me just because I'm a girl, and that's, I love that, because I don't feel like I'm getting special treatment. And I just, I've talked to a bunch of my friends, and I know, girls has been, I've talked to my friends about lacrosse, and they've said, you know, "I've been interested in that, I'm wondering about it." And so I really believe that, once you take the survey, you'll see that there's a lot of interest, and that the students at schools would really love to see lacrosse. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Clay Postidoni, I live in Downers, I go to North, and, well, since there is no school team, it's kind of interesting when kids come up to me in the hall and they say, "Hey, when's the tryouts for the North lacrosse team?" And I have to tell them, "Oh, it's a club, you have to pay for this, it's something on the side." And a lot of people in our schools will play if there is a school team available to them. And people stay with it, it's an addicting sport. I've played a bunch of sports when I was younger, but none of them really stuck to me like lacrosse did. I really like it, it's a really fun game, it's, again, it's addicting. And I've got friends on other teams from other schools in Naperville and Hinsdale, and to hear them talking about the school team that they have and what they've done, where they've gone with those teams, it's, it would be nice to have that, you know, here in Downers as an opportunity for us, so, to give this opportunity to other people would be just a great thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, and as you know, there'll be a process in the spring, the passion is obvious, you know, and we'll just have to see what, how the details work out, but the passion's obvious, and there's obviously a lot of sympathy and support for moving forward, so, but there's a process that we do have to follow. With that, I think, is there anything else we need to do tonight? There was a, yeah, Chair invited a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion adjourned, motion second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Here, meeting adjourned.